Thank you everyone for coming. Alicia, do we have a quorum, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Contreras is present. Councilmember Rynzant is present. Councilmember Renenbaum is present. Mayor Moss is present. Councilmember Yang is present. And Councilmember Cramel is present.
Thank you. At this time Pastor Jonathan Mansour of First Baptist Church will give our invocation and lead us in the pledge. Absolutely. Thank you.
Let's pray. Our holy and gracious God, first, we thank you for all that you have given to us. Life, breath, and the city in which we live and work. Your scriptures tell us that every good and perfect gift comes from above graciously handed down to us by you, our unchanging God. For all the ways in which you show your common grace to men, women, and children here, we thank you. Your scripture also tells us that governing authorities were your idea and plan, that they have authority only because you've given it to them. You also instruct us to pray for all who are in authority. Therefore, God, I pray specifically that you would guide the council's decisions with wisdom for what is good, both for the people and for the city. That the council and city leaders, all those in authority, would be wise and good stewards of the things for which they are responsible. For voices to be heard as leaders represent the people, and for people to be understanding as leaders shoulder great burdens. For our city, our people, to care about justice and to care for those who need help, since living in community where we watch after one another is your plan. For willingness to work together harmoniously to the extent to which we can on our own, and to handle any conflict in a civil manner in hopes of producing a better solution together. Lastly, I pray for peace and order, two things of which scripture says you are the God. All of this we pray in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Could you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Alicia, do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Our first order of business is to approve the council meeting minutes of June the 8th, 2021. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the June 8th, 2021 meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Our first order of business is to consider an act on the appointment of Mike Caldwell to the Board of Adjustment. He is filling the vacancy due to the resignation of Richard Casperian. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Mike Caldwell to the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number two, to consider an act on entering into an agreement with NextGen Strategies and Solutions for the purpose of conducting a water and wastewater revenue sufficiency and rate study. Mr. Grimes.
The last rate study done by the City of Willow Park, I believe, was in 2016 and probably went to effect, I want to say around 2017. I may be off on those dates a little bit. So it's time for us to do another rate study. We've done quite a few improvement projects during that time, including the Fort Worth Water Project. We just got funded for a wastewater treatment plant and a few other projects as well. NextGen did the previous study, and I recommend that we, that you guys authorize me to sign the engagement letter, which I believe is attached in your packet, and that we can get the rate study going.
Do we have a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What's the timeframe on completion of the rate study?
Probably thirty to forty-five days.
Oh, okay.
Total.
Pass then.
Yeah. I think it's probably going to be less, but...
Okay. Not six months?
No, I would not anticipate six months.
And we have a suggested motion in the packet.
Yes.
And the rate, how much do we think it's going to cost?
Thirty thousand. And we have, that'll come out of the water fund reserves.
Okay.
I move that the Willow Park City Council authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with NextGen Strategies and Solutions for purposes discussed.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number three, drainage fee update. Mr. Derrick?
Are you going to change it, Rose?
Is the clicker not on the podium?
Oh, there it is. It's hidden.
You need to turn it off and on again.
Sorry.
Left on the side.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Council. We're going to give an update on the stormwater fee and the stormwater capital improvement plan. As you guys recall, the stormwater fees have been approved, and they're set to be implemented very soon, this year. We've been working on identifying the different types of fee structure, residential, multifamily, commercial, and so on. We're just about done with that process. Candy is about to give the breakdown that we've got to the billing company, billing software company, and within the next month or so, I believe, we're going to try to get those implemented. So that'll be coming in soon. We've also, the CIP that was updated recently, we've added some very recent information to that, and I'm going to go over that a little bit as well. Speaking of the accounts, we've gone down again, we took your water billing and your trash billing, which is basically what we're basing things off of, as far as who's going to be impacted. And there are roughly, I believe there's nineteen hundred and ninety-seven total accounts, eighteen hundred and thirty, single family, seventeen multifamily, and one hundred and fifteen, commercial. Based on the fees that were approved, the estimated fee generated for that is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. The, if you take out, I estimated about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, O and M, staff, equipment, materials, and general maintenance, that would leave about three hundred thousand dollars available for debt service. So the scope of the improvements that we're talking about, as I mentioned, the CIP for this is not that old. I think it's less than a year, maybe about a year. We've had a few things come up since then that we've discovered that there are a couple of other drainage issues around town that we've added. But what I'm going to talk about ultimately tonight is all phases of the CIP that we presented to you guys previously. And you can see, I know this, you can't really read this map very well, but it's really, I put it in just to kind of show you the areas of town. The areas in circled in red are the ones that were specifically, those were areas specifically identified in the CIP for improvement. If you recall, the CIP included a pretty broad basis for all the culverts around town. There were categories for major culverts, minor culverts, first priority, second priority. So there, it really covered the entire city, but these areas were areas identified specifically. The larger ones being the one on the far right on El Chico, the ditch that goes down kind of the east edge of town and then wraps back around El Chico. The area down around Beaver's Creek that's flooded recently, all of these I'm sure have. And then a covert on San Bass, those are probably the three largest ones that we have listed. This is a list that's off the CIP, and again, there's been a couple added, actually, I think they fall under the, those nine, ten, and eleven categories, the areas that I'm talking about, but you can see they're listed. They're in alphabetical order, but you can see the costs that were associated with those in the CIP. Beaver's Creek, Castlemont, Chuck Wagon Trail, they're all, they're all identified in the original CIP. Couple of other areas were added, and those are, those mainly fall under item number ten there. But again, these eleven items pretty much include every drainage structure in town, at least the ones that were identified as needing improvement. The only thing that's not included is ditch work specifically. In some cases, that would be included with what's being done, but that would generally be included in the yearly O and M figure. So you can see with a little bit of contingency added, that comes out to about three point five eight million dollars. And I just ran a quick debt service number for that amount for a twenty-year term at five percent. Yearly debt service comes out to two hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. So you can see that with the rate structure that we have proposed and with the number of accounts, comes out less than what your debt service ability would be. There are a couple of options for funding, obviously, open market COs or GOs or tax notes are available to you, but the Texas Water Development Board, CWSRF program that you, that you're using for your wastewater plant, that's actually specifically used for drainage improvements as well. It's for sanitary sewer and storm drainage. So these are all projects that would qualify for that fund, and right now, I looked today, actually, this was yesterday, the current interest rates were one point two five percent. So that's still a very good program to look at for this type of project as well.
So on that note, for the backup chart, on the DWDV, what's the process we'd have to apply?
So it's, if you recall, you've used this process twice. You've done, actually, the city has done it multiple times in the last four or five years, but recently, the Fort Worth Water Project was the exact same process. It was the DWSRF, the drinking water program. And the wastewater project that is actually funding tomorrow technically, but that's the, that's the CWSRF program. So you have to file an application. Well, first, you have to file a notice of desire to apply. They rank you, and if they determine that your project is within their funding line, then you would submit an application. You have to do environmental, an environmental assessment, preliminary engineering report. If you recall, we went through that process on the wastewater plant. And then, once they approve the application, then you would be cut loose to design and go through the design process, and they release money as you hit stages. You've got the planning stage, which would be the initial environmental and other funding, the design, and then you go into the construction project, so...
So for a application to funding, is, what do we think, in six months, or?
You really need to include that project information form, that notice of intent to pursue it, because that's a lengthy, that's part of the lengthy part of the process. So it's probably, from now, you're probably looking at about a year to get an application approval, because you have to wait for their cycle. They don't, they don't take applications all the time, so...
So question, so if we approve a CO or to move this forward quickly, can we come back and apply for that later or in parallel and then refund that debt with that lower cost funding? I mean...
You can. You have to be very careful that you, that the procedure you follow...
Has to be.
...is, follows the requirements that they have for their program. I don't know if you recall, we, on the wastewater project, you guys had the sewer note that was, that was taken out a few years ago.
Right.
We attempted to get that refunded, and some of the things did follow the requirements that they had, but a couple didn't, just one or two items, and so it cut, so they wouldn't fund it for that reason. So you have to be very diligent about making sure every step is followed, that they would normally use procurement, things like that.
But it is feasible, we could do that.
Yes.
So we get to move this on much quicker and then come back for the better funding.
And it could be, and going directly to the program could be faster, but you know, it's several months, you've got probably three, four more months before they take the project information forms, and then there's a ranking process, and then you've got to file an application. So it's several months at a minimum.
This is more a question for Maha, but do you have, have you done any drainage projects? I mean, did you come up with, where'd you get the five percent number? Is that just something you've?
The interest number?
Yes.
Yeah, it was just based on...
Okay.
Before the interest rates dropped so much, that was kind of the average that we would see over a long period.
I think the question for council is, the Water Development Board is certainly an appealing interest rate, but it's a long process. And if you're doing, you know, thirteen point seven million, it's kind of worth it. If you're doing fourteen million on a sewer plant, it's worth it. But if the open market is, I don't want to sound callous, but if it's two and a half or three percent, and you can get your money in a number of months versus a year, year and a half...
Yeah, and if we're diligent about the process, and we have a checklist or however we, you know, monitor this process to make sure we're following their guidelines, and that does open up the opportunity to refinance this at some point at a lower rate, I would think.
Yeah.
If the rates are still low, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
But if you're at two, two and a quarter, like I think you probably are now, pretty close to it on the open market, you're almost going to pay as much, it's going to cost you more to go to the Water Development Board, because there's more hoops you have to jump through. So for three, three or four million dollars, Brian's probably right, it may be less expensive anyway.
And you're looking at one point two five now.
Right.
That's not the interest rate when you close, which was...
Yeah, it could move up significantly by then.
Exactly.
But it would be worthwhile to follow their process and have that option if you needed it.
Yeah.
Derek, I have a question about following that process. What is the added cost for following that process with the additional studies that are required for them?
So on the open market, you still have to do some environmental assessment, but it's minimal. The Water Development Board is very stringent, it's federal requirements, it's, you know, the one we did for the Fort Worth Water was about seventy-five thousand dollars. If you went out and did bonds, you'd probably be looking at a few thousand dollars total. The preliminary engineering requirements are more stringent, you know, you want to do some of that anyway, but a lot of that's been done, but you would still have to turn around and do it for them anew regardless. So there's, you know, several fifteen, twenty thousand dollars probably. The procurement requirements, it's also, you have to comply with American Iron and Steel, so material prices are generally higher, they're going to hook up a cost for that. Contractors tend to bid those a little higher because they have to jump through a bunch of hoops. Once the contract is let, they've got a lot of paperwork and documentation that they have to do, so. So those are mainly the areas where you see the increase.
Yeah.
Could, could you check and see what?
Sure, yeah.
And report back to us on the open market and see what...
What I can do is, if y'all like, I can have, I can take these numbers to Maha and have him run a schedule for twenty years.
Yeah.
Would we, what's the delay for us acting on picking between doing Water Development Board and doing open market? What's, what do we have to have before we can decide that?
Well, you, you're going to delve in a hypothetical with Water Development Board because we're going to try to anticipate with the tax rate, with the interest rate.
I'm saying, like, could we tonight pick something if we had that information? Is there anything left that we have to do as far as getting that funding in place based on what we've already?
It depends which road you want to go down. You'll go down Water Development Board.
Okay, we're at that point, where we're good to go, we just need to pick the path. Okay, that was what I was asking, is if we had any more two- to three-month delay to do that.
And I can, I can have that data to you, either one, the process, once you decide whichever road you want to go down.
Okay.
But let's assume open market.
Okay.
On the thirteenth of July, you could issue notice of intent to issue debt, and that starts a forty-five day clock.
Okay.
This is self-supporting debt, so it's not really going to be tied to interest and sinking, although we may have to pledge some interest in sinking to it because we don't have, I'm pretty sure they're going to say you don't have a generated revenue stream yet. We want to, you know, we know it's coming, but we want a security there, but it wouldn't impact the interest and sinking rate.
Okay.
Get that, get that back to us on the thirteenth.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was kind of getting at, is we're at that point that we can start making that decision. Do we need, are we comfortable with where we are on the cost estimates, like?
Yeah, it's...
That this is good for what we need to go out for funding, and then we'll go out for preparation of the bid package, and, okay. Perfect.
Does this include all of those additional, those fees and such, like you were discussing, kind of based on Eric's question with engineering costs, anything? What is, like, by the time this is grand total, what are we looking at the...
The number, the three point eight five includes all of it.
All of that is included, okay.
So three point eight five plus issuance cost would be, would be the note, correct?
Right, yes.
Three point eight, so the construction cost, I'm assuming there's engineering included in this as well?
Engineering's included.
Okay, so three point eight five would get ninety-five percent of the drainage projects?
Actually, that's, that includes every, every project we identified.
Okay, a hundred percent of the ones we've identified, okay.
And it includes financing. It includes some estimate of financing also.
Okay, but then you, we still have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar cushion for...
Right, yeah.
For yearly things.
Right, general maintenance.
Okay. Does this address the situation over at Fox Hunt with El Chico and the drainage situation there that kind of started the whole conversation two years ago?
Yeah, that's one of the, one of the larger projects we had.
I saw it's half a million. Do you think that's a good number to have?
And so that gets us, in the future, as that branch develops, that gets that drainage in a position to accept anything that might happen down the road with the...
Right, well, I mean, you know, I don't know what that drainage upstream would look like, but, but yeah, it would be...
It puts our, where we are now, correct, so that anybody coming in just has to manage what they do.
Yeah, they have to.
Right.
They'll have to deal with whatever they send downstream.
Exactly, okay.
Thanks, Derek. Very good. Next item is update on the installation of census meters. Michelle.
I wanted to give y'all an update. Just so y'all know, as of this morning, there was, five hundred and thirteen meters have been installed already. They got started the week of May twenty-fourth, and if y'all remember, that week and the following week, we had rain constantly for more days than I care to count. And so it kind of slowed down the process. We only got about two hundred meters installed in the first two weeks, but now that we've got a rainy period, they're picking up and they're getting going. They started in the hundred planned area, and they are completely done with that addition. Willow Park Village is approximately ninety-five percent done. We've run into a few snags there that we're going to slowly overcome and hopefully get that one done about another month or so. We have sent them out into the Willow Park area, I'm sorry, West Oak, West, that addition down there. They're about, I'm going to say seventy-five to eighty percent of that one, so... Next, I'm going to have them start, I call it the Will Springs and Will Springs Oaks. Y'all know FM five, Ford Bankhead, South of Zippin' Bay. So that's where they're headed when they get done, in the West Oak area. But I wanted to give y'all a chance to look at the portal. It is not done, I want to phrase that, but we're getting a lot closer, and about the time that we have all the meters in, the portal should be up and working, we're hoping. This will be the launch page that the customer will see, they'll log in, and then this will be the very main screen that they'll see. Billing cycle usage, you actually, once we have a year's worth of data, they'll be able to see the previous months, previous years, same month, usage for that.
So in September of twenty-two, they'll be able to see September of twenty-one.
Twenty-one, right. And then, since this meter is already in and active, you can see that, so yesterday when we took these screenshots, they use, they've already used four thousand gallons for this billing period. I want to be sure to say that that's correct, that's... They'll also, there'll be a link where they can pay their bill here. They'll be able to see their usage by date. They'll also be able to see it hourly, so that they can see, if they had a leak, they can actually see when the leak started and how long it lasted. And then, we've been getting lots of questions already about how we're going to train people to use this portal. Well, census thankfully has thought of everything, because they provide us videos with all of this, so... We will have, we're still, Rose and I are still working, we're probably going to have like an open house where people can come in, and we will help them get set up, but if, for those that want to do it at home, that want to tackle that, and it's not that hard. There's videos if they get, start having issues, so...
This looks very similar to like most electric suppliers now, you see what your usage is. Yeah, okay.
They have access to it, we have access to the same information.
And that's, we didn't provide it, but our page looks a little different, but we can actually click a button, and it will take us directly to theirs, we can see what they're seeing, so...
Does this, we discussed, and this has been a while, almost a year ago, does this have the alerts that it wants you to view so many gallons per month, you get a text message?
Yeah, in fact, it will, you can sign up for alerts, or if you log in, it will give you the alerts that list, like, you use however many in a certain amount of time. It will, those alerts will only do it after an hour though, so if you have high consumption in one hour, it will alert you then, but until it kind of figures out what your usage is and times of days and stuff, it's not going to alert you until it learns your habits, so...
Is there an app that they can download?
There'll be an app, but I don't know when that will be available, that'll be, that's going to be the very last thing I can promise you.
So you said you got five hundred and thirteen installed, how many are left to go?
About fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred and so...
Fifteen hundred, okay.
What did they expect to finish?
If we don't have any more weather delays with the way they're moving at, I figure end of August, first of September, so...
Very good, all right. That's good.
Are you seeing any, with the meters that are in, are you seeing more consumption?
We have seen a little bit. We actually have been now, technically, for our first billing cycle, because the fifteenth is when we read meters. So last Wednesday, in fact, I spent, I was in two hundred and eighty-seven meters to make sure that they imported into the billing system correctly, and I'm actually seeing some increases already. So I think our own meters were reaching their lifespan, so this is a good time to be doing this.
So we're not necessarily generating more revenue, we're just getting better readings?
Yeah.
Very good. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, briefing on new mass notification system for Civic Ready. Rose.
Good evening, Council, citizens. I don't have any visuals tonight because we literally signed the paperwork to get this started about a week ago. We have been evaluating our mass notification system, which has been blackboarded for over a decade now. It's basically the text alerts and the phone call alerts that we send out for severe weather, water, water leak issues, that sort of thing, other items where we're trying to reach a lot of people quickly. Upon auditing our blackboard results, we were finding we had a very serious delay in those messages reaching people, which was particularly problematic for severe weather. We saw some examples where the storm alerts were hitting people after the storm had passed. So needless to say, this was a concern for me, and particularly for our fire department. So we evaluated some systems and looked at several different companies, and Civic Plus, the company that does our website, actually offers a service called Civic Ready, and it is comparable in price to the system that we're using now, with a number of significant upgrades, one of which is that they guarantee immediate delivery of severe notifications. Another thing that the fire department is very excited about is, they're automatic. They link to, is it National Oceanic Atmosphere? Okay, they link basically to the national weather systems, so that if a severe storm comes through at three in the morning... at three in the morning, they're not having to stand next to the radar to send out that alert. It automatically sends to our citizens, which we think will be a really big help for the safety of Willow Park residents. It also offers unlimited messaging, which is very helpful, especially if we have a time where we're sending out a lot of alerts in a short period of time. It's a lot easier to use on the backend for staff. We should be starting training in about a month on all of it, and we should see implementation in roughly ninety days. I just wanted to give you guys an alert on it, and I'll come back and break you a little more when we have it closer to the implementation date. But you're going to be seeing some messaging about that, and you'll probably be seeing, be getting some questions about that. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was familiar with the choice we made there. So when those questions come, you'll know how to answer. Does anybody have any questions?
So how do, how do people make sure their cell phones are tied or registered with this thing?
So we are going to be able to automatically import all the data from the current blackboard users. And we're also going to be able to import all of the data from all of our utility billing systems. And then we will also do a marketing campaign for anyone who is not carried over from either of those two sources, that they can go ahead and opt in. And of course, we'll still have on the water applications, if you're new to town, you'll still have a place to be able to sign up to be added to the system.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thanks, Rose.
Thanks.
Number six, to consider and act on items to be considered for future council meetings. We have the drainage thing you're going to bring up.
I've got, yes, I've got the drainage thing. I just made a note of that. Obviously, we're going to have the budget workshop on the thirteenth. We have the impact fees public hearing on the thirteenth. Is there anything we need to do on the property swap, or is that, is that...
Today, you responded, there were, our land exchange agreement expires at the end of July. So we've gotten just about everything tied together. And so I've asked them, what are we going to close? Or do we need to extend it? As you saw, as you said today, he said he'd try to get the church to find a closing date in the next thirty, forty days. So that's, that will fit the schedule if we can get that done. And so unless there is a delay, then we'll come back with you to agree to extend the agreement.
Very good. I'm trying to keep the thirteenth agenda fairly light. Obviously, I'll entertain any ideas that you guys want to do. But the workshop and the public hearing are, you know, pretty, mainly the workshop's going to take, consume quite a bit of time. But anything y'all want to add for the thirteenth?
So our waste treatment funding is expected this week?
Tomorrow.
Approved. Is there anything we have to do in the near future, council-wise, to...
We've already issued the debt. We will close on it tomorrow. I'm assuming the mayor will probably sign the closing docs.
Very good. Anything else? Next setting date and time for next council meeting, I'm looking at July the thirteenth. That's a Tuesday at seven PM. Is that correct, Mr. Grimes?
That is correct, sir.
With budget workshop to follow.
Yes. I can, if you remember the last meeting, I was going to do a budget workshop after adjournment, but Pat suggested we just do a budget workshop as part of the agenda. And so we'll, we'll post it as such. On that note, I visited with all the department heads. We pretty much have a good budget for you guys to look at. And there's a few things we got to tweak in the, in the water and wastewater funds, but right now, the budget's looking really good.
I appreciate the department heads and everyone working with Brian on the budget.
I'll tell you this, it's very, and Mike and Candy, or Mike and Carrie know this, it is very public safety heavy. It is public safety driven.
That's good.
And that is a good thing.
Okay, anything else from council? Motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.